All right, I'd like to call to order the Fridley Public School Board meeting for October 15th. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. I will start. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda for the October 15th meeting?
Motion moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Adam and second by Thornton to approve the agenda for October 15th. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Next, we have a spotlight on recognition, beginning with the Employee of the Month for September. Dr. Heil.
Thank you. Good evening Chair Riddle and school board members. It's with great pleasure I introduce Employee of the Month for September is Alota Sims. She is our Equity Inclusion Specialist for the district. Alota is extremely valued at the middle school and across the district, widely known for her back-to-school resource fair that provides school supplies and resources to hundreds of students across the district. Her connection to the community help bring us in many resources to our families during the year and around the holidays. In addition, Alota is a major asset to both staff and students. Students seek her out and she develops deep relationships by helping to teach students life skills and support in areas of need. They know they can always count on her. The middle school is lucky to have Alota to support her staff, students, and families. And that was written by Principal Amy Cochran.
Thank you. Next, beginning of the superintendent and staff reports with a preview of Guys and Dolls.
I am so excited, jazz hands. We have a preview today. We welcome some of the cast from the upcoming Guys and Dolls musical performing at the Fridley High School. That's on November 8th through the 9th as well as November 14th through the 16th in a district auditorium. So, welcome.
Yay!
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Hi, my name is Raycon Farr. I am in the cast of Guys and Dolls. I play Sky Masterson. I don't really know. I'm here to sing "Luck Be a Lady", which is one of my solos in the show as a little preview for you guys tonight. So, I hope you enjoy. Thank you. They call you Lady Luck, but there is room for doubt. At times you have a very un-ladylike way of running out. You're on this date with me, the pickings have been lush. And yet before this evening is over, you might give me the brush. You might forget your manners, you might refuse to stay. And so the best that I can do is pray. Luck be a lady tonight, luck be a lady tonight. Luck, if you've ever been a lady, tell me again with, luck be a lady tonight. Luck, let a gentleman see how nice and in you can be. I know the way you've treated other guys you've been with. Luck be a lady with me. A lady doesn't leave her escort, it isn't fair, it isn't nice. A lady doesn't wander all over the room and blow on some other guy's dice. So let's keep the party polite, never get out of my sight. Stick with me, baby, I'm the fella you came in with. Luck be a lady. Luck be a lady. Luck be a lady tonight. And at this point, some of my peers take over for a little bit, so I'm going to take this opportunity to hand out a couple of cards for you guys here with dates and times. Yes, you're welcome. It's a little advertising public relations. Luck, let a gentleman see how nice and in you can be. I know the way you've treated other guys you've been with. Luck be a lady with me. A lady doesn't flirt with strangers, she'd have a heart, she'd have a soul. A lady doesn't make little steak eyes at me when I bet my life on this roll. So let's keep the party polite, never get out of my sight. Stick with me, baby, I'm the fella you came in with. Luck be a lady. Luck be a lady. Luck be a lady tonight.
Yay!
That was incredible. Thank you. I actually got to go see that this summer at the Guthrie's.
Just fantastic.
My name's Daniel Towe.
I'm Ruby Richard.
And I'm playing Nathan Detroit in the same production, Guys and Dolls.
I play Adelaide.
And we're going to be performing for you soon. I promise we'll be happy forever.
Promise me this, you promise me that, you promise me anything under the sun. And you give me a kiss and you're grabbing your hat and you're off to the races again. When I think of the time gone by.
Adelaide!
And I think of the way I tried.
Adelaide!
I could honestly die.
Call a lawyer and sue me, sue me. What can you do me? I love you. Give a holler and hate me, hate me. Go ahead, hate me. I love you.
The best years of my life, I was a fool to give to you.
Alright, I'm just an old good nick. Alright, already it's true. So new, so sue me, sue me. What can you do me? I love you.
You gamble in here, you gamble in there, you gamble on everything. Oh, it's at me! And I'm sick of you keeping me up in the air till you're back into money again. When I think of the time gone by.
Adelaide!
And I think of the way I tried.
Adelaide!
I could honestly die.
Serve a paper and sue me, sue me. What can you do me? I love you. Give a holler and hate me, hate me. Go ahead, hate me. I love you.
When you went up in jail, I wanted me to bail you out.
Alright, so call a policeman. Alright, already it's true. So new, so sue me, sue me. What can you do me? I love you.
You're at it again, you're running the game. I'm not going to play second fiddle to that. And I'm sick and I'm tired of stalling around. And I'm telling you now that we're through. When I think of the time gone by.
Adelaide!
And I think of the way I tried.
Adelaide!
I could honestly die.
Sue me, sue me. Shoot bullets through me. I love you.
Well, thank you. As the 1982 Benny South Street, I can't wait to see the performance. And in fact, I have to admit, I don't have my hat tonight, but the hat I usually wear was actually the hat that I wore in 1982.
I did not know that.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have another wonderful student performance from our Fridley High School Robotics. We're going to have a demonstration. And we have a member of the robotics team, Devon Hanson, along with advisor, Ms. Mulry. So, please go ahead and share.
Hi, I'm Andrea Mulry. I am, sorry. Andrea Mulry, I am a coach for the robotics team. And in the back is Devon Hanson. He's going to drive the robot up for us. Sorry, don't be alarmed.
Oh, wow.
So this robot was built in about six weeks, starting at the beginning of January. Our season runs from January through the middle to end of February. In January, this is just a pile of parts. So, it's just a pile of motors, wires, angle iron. We even build the bumper parts right here. Devon, are you ready to come up? So every January, there is a game that is designed. And we have to build a robot to play that game at a competition. And Devon's going to take it away from here.
So, this year's game was a space-themed game. There's two different game pieces. There was this, which is a cargo, which is about a 13-inch kickball. And there's this, which is called a hatch pan, which is just a piece of polycarbonate with felcrone on the edge. Our robot was designed to score both of them. So, this would be in a feeder station. Our robot would drive up. So our robot would drive up. Then, robot would drive forward. It would drive forward, place it on like this beak in the front, actuate up, carry it back to the frame. Then our robot would drive around, score that. There's several different scoring locations. There's one about height or level here. And there's several higher up in the sky. On the ground, about here. Another one about that high off the ground. Then, there is a secondary game piece, which is this cargo. The catch was that those hatches have to be scored before this cargo, the game piece. So, we would score those first. Then, we'd go intake these. We have rolling wheels. To keep the game piece in. Then, same thing with the hatch. Nope, that's gone. It would lift up, score at the same place, and then so on. Then, during the last 30 seconds of the map, there is what's called end game, where there's three different level platforms. So, we decided to also attempt that game challenge, which we'd raise in the air with two stilts here. Just winch down, robot goes up, climbs onto the platforms.
Wow.
So now, we're going to play a short video that shows a bit of our past season. That's one of the slides, but this past season, we had around 15 to 25 members.
Wow.
So this is just a short video that shows a bit of our actual competition. So at our competitions, we attend regionals, which typically we have 60 different teams of other high school robotics teams from all around the state of Minnesota. Each team gathers in normally sports venues like this. This is the Mariucci Arena, Mariucci Arena, down the U of M campus. Every team gets their own 10-by-10 pit, where they get to set up all their tools as well as their space to fix the robot. Then, they go through a set of qualification matches, normally eight to 10, where the robot is ranked based on its performance. Then, from that, the robots then pick their own partners to go into playoffs, which typically goes through quarterfinalists through finals. With the top eight ranked teams picking their own alliance of three robots total. Here you can see our 2019 robot scoring the disc game piece called the hatch. So, one thing you might notice is we can move sideways pretty freely. We have a special type of drivetrain that is called mecanum. It involves wheels with rollers at 45-degree angles, which allow us to run them in opposition. So we can pretty much strafe right and left, as well as drive normally as forward, backwards, and turn. Which allows us to be more maneuverable placing game pieces. Here you're going to see us attempt climb. We winch those two stilts down in the middle. Then, pretty much walk onto the platform. And the robot pulls itself forward through the front drivetrain wheels. Then, once we're all the way on, the back stilt goes up and we're on the platform. You can see another part of robotics is scouting. So, our members have to scout out the other robots still there. If we're an alliance captain, we can make educated picks. So, what you can see there was in between matches, our robot takes almost like wear and tear or damage from the field of the competitions. So, we have to kind of repair it. That is one of our now team alumni, Zach, who instead of being part of our scouting team, he dances his heart away at competition. We miss him greatly.
Did you place in this competition?
Yes. So, this 2019 season, we attended two competitions so far. One was in Grand Forks, North Dakota, where we ranked 12th out of about 55 teams. We were picked by the second-seeded captain and we're on, we made it to semifinals. Then, at our second competition of the year, we ranked 16th and were picked by the eighth-seeded captain and upset the first seed in quarterfinals and went out in semifinals again. We have another off-season competition coming up late November. Should be the last competition for this robot.
What is the 2227?
So, in first, we compete in something called FIRST, which is a nonprofit organization that promotes interest of STEM in youth. So, they have several different games. One is four different levels. They have First Lego League Junior, First Lego League, which the Fridley Districts now has teams starting for this current season, the 2020 season, at the middle school and elementary school respectively. We compete at their highest level, which is First Robotics Competition. So, when you start a team, you get a number based on when you started. So, we're the 227th team.
Gotcha.
They're now currently, they're on like, they're handing out 8,000 numbers. So, First Robotics, in the next slide. So, FIRST is a robotics competition. We get six to eight weeks to build robots like this. We have to build them, design them, program them in that short time period. So, the robots are rewarded based on their competitiveness and the team's overall strategy, as well as the team's ability to collaborate and have quick thinking skills. So, on fly decisions. So, robotics is pretty big in Minnesota. This past season, there was 222 teams in the state. That's more, there's more high school robotics teams in Minnesota than there are high school hockey teams.
Wow.
Really?
So, Minnesota has the third-largest amount of FRC teams, only behind Michigan and California. And then, so, why is robotics important? Robotics allows students to learn hard skills and soft skills. So, you can learn skills like computer aided drafting and design, which is like 3D modeling. You can learn electrical, programming, marketing, PR. But you also learn soft skills like team building, communication, and time management skills. So, as well as being in first, students, just being on a first team, getting access to around $70 million in scholarships to colleges all across the world and the United States. So, you can see on the left is a picture of the team, the second year of its life, 2008. You can see that we had around six to seven, eight members. And years since, we've grown to around, to average around 15 to 25 students per season. Then, as well as that, with the recent surge in members, we've also had a recent surge in accomplishments. So, 2014, we won the 10,000 Lakes Regional. 2016, we were finalists at that same regional. Then in 2018, we were semifinalist captain, as well as a quality award winner at the Northern Lakes Regional. Then in 2018, we ranked seventh at the state champs. And then, in the past, since 2016, we've consistently ranked in the top 20% of teams in Minnesota, as well as we have not missed playoffs at a regional since 2016.
Wow. What do you attribute your great success to?
Just having enough people to get done, as well as... So, having enough people to get stuff done. It's a lot easier to build something as massive as this when you have 15 people versus eight.
Right.
As well as, as we've grown, the knowledge we pass down to the next generation, our next generation of students, has become more and more, which allows better design and stuff like that to happen. More efficient time management.
You said you have one more competition, the end of...
Yep. So, we have what's called...
So, we're going to find out when that is, right?
That is November 23rd. It's the Saturday before Thanksgiving.
And where is that?
That would be Prior Lake. Prior Lake High School.
So what got you interested in robotics?
It was Mulry. My freshman year, she was like, hey, she joined a club. And then she told me about robotics. So I joined, liked it. Now I'm a senior, so I guess it worked.
Where are you, where are you going next year? Do you have a college? Are you applying?
Goal right now is U of M, but I'm not completely set on any college currently.
Good for you.
Good job. Keep recruiting, Mallory.
Thank you. That's excellent. Take your guy with you. Number 2227. Do you name them? What? Wait, we didn't hear that.
So, this year's robot is named Gutbuster.
Gutbuster.
That's awesome.
Every time. We have a limited season, so we have to ban the robot by a certain date. On that last day, the team, we ordered a grave case and consumed all of it. So, we thought it would be to name the robot Gutbuster.
Beautiful. All right. Well, thank you very much and good luck in November.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with the unfortunate task to follow students, Ms. McLemore, are you...
Poor child.
Have a...
Seems to be your lot.
Pick somebody else, right?
But this presentation actually ties into that. Because it's about an operating levy that supports the kind of programs that you're seeing today. So, it's wonderful for our students to come and share this with community. At least they get to see, many of them who are not able to come into our schools, they get to see the infinite potential of our students. And it's always a good investment to fund their education. So, Board Chair Riddle, board members, and Superintendent Dr. Heil, tonight, we are going to give a very brief update on our 2019 operating levy referendum. We have been conducting informational meetings. We have met with all our staff members in each of our buildings. And we have done the presentation in small group settings. We have held one community forum that we had an opportunity to engage with many of our seniors. We sent an invitation to all our community members and we thank those who were able to be there with us that evening. We also understand that there are many community members who may be watching us tonight that were not able to attend the informational session. The presentation we are going to present tonight is really a summary of a couple of items that have come up in our presentation. Staff members and community members are really curious to know where our, why our funding looks the way it does. Why we have a funding gap in Fridley Public Schools compared to the state and metro average. We also get questions about open enrollment from staff members, as well as community members who may not be in our schools, but do understand that Fridley Public Schools participate in open enrollment and just want to have a better understanding of how that works in Fridley. So today's presentation is two-part. I'm going to be presenting it with our Director of Finance, Mr. Todd Tilang, who has also been very instrumental in putting this levy together. And we hope that our community members who are watching, if they have additional questions, there will be information on our slide later on, how they can get in touch with us. And we'll be happy to answer those questions for them.
Good evening. So what I kind of want to walk through is how Fridley Public Schools fits into the city of Fridley and how that impacts our funding as Ms. McLemore was talking about. So what we're looking at here on our first slide, the red boundary, is outlining the city limits of the city of Fridley. The next, what we slid in now is the yellow boundary is the boundaries for Fridley Public Schools as it relates to the city of Fridley. And our school boundaries are roughly four square miles. And then, within that map, we have our two elementary schools, our middle school or a high school, and our area learning center. And something I wanted to point out, I don't have a pointer, but on the bottom half of the map, in that lower red block, is our Columbia Heights School District that sits in within the city of Fridley city limits. The top rectangle above the Fridley boundary is our Spring Lake Park. Again, sitting in the city of Fridley. And then the top portion of the red box above that yellow line is a portion of Anoka Hennepin, again, in the city of Fridley. Now, Anoka Hennepin comes around the top half of the map and down a little bit. And then in the bottom-left corner of the map is Brooklyn Center, outside of the city limits. And then not on the map is Mounds View. And the reason I point that out is technically Fridley Public Schools, it's kind of boxed in. And the reason I point that out here is on the next map. So from a business perspective, one of the things that we highlight from Fridley Public Schools is we're a low-property wealth district. And what we mean by that is from a commercial industry standpoint. So on this map, you can see we have Lifetime, we have Cub, and we have Home Depot. But we also have, you know, quite a few small businesses or strip malls that do generate tax levy dollars that do come to the Fridley Public Schools. But on the next map, what has just popped in is in Columbia Heights School District, in the city of Fridley, they have Menards, Target, Medtronic Plaza, and HB Fuller. Now, those businesses sit inside of city of Fridley, but they generate tax dollars for the Columbia Heights School District. And then on that top rectangle, you have another Medtronic Plaza, you have Cummings, you have the new city of Fridley City Hall, and you have MinCo that are inside the city of Limits, but they provide tax dollars to Spring Lake Park. And then in the top corner, you have Sam's Club and Walmart that are providing tax dollars to Anoka Hennepin. So for us here in Fridley, as you can see, within our four square miles, we don't have the ability to generate new business, or I should say, large businesses, that large commercial industries that would generate, you know, significant tax dollars for us that the other school districts within the city of Fridley are able to do. Now, the reason I point that out is here on this chart here is how Fridley Public Schools generates our tax... Our tax, our operational levy right now is $911. It's $446 less than the state and $776 less than the metro average. Now, we belong to an organization called Schools for Equity Education, also called CEE. Now, they provide us a handout that highlights that if we wanted to generate, let's say, a tax levy or an operational levy of $2,387. In Hopkins, that taxpayer on a $100,000 home would pay $169. If we wanted to generate that same levy, that $2387 levy here in Fridley, that $100,000 homeowner in Fridley would pay $613 in annual taxes. Right now, our levy of $187, they pay $27 annual taxes for our current levy of $187. So, that would be a $586 increase for that $100,000 homeowner to get the same levy that Hopkins gets at $169. And the reason is, is because we, going back, is that map right there. Because of that, we just do not have the ability to generate tax dollars from commercial industries. And so that's our challenge. So, our other funding challenges we talked about is our funding gap. So, the green bar represents our actual state funding that we receive from the state per student. The orange bar reflects what the state funding would be had inflation been attached to the funding formula. That's our, that's our gap that we have. So our current levy doesn't have inflation attached to it. We have a funding gap from the state, again, because there's not inflation attached to it. We have costs in the district that have inflation to it. And then our third funding challenge in the district is the state's lack of funding our special education. So we have a cross subsidy of roughly $2 million. So we have a current levy, doesn't have inflation attached to it. We have a funding gap with the state with no inflation. And then we have our... and then we have our special ed cross subsidy as well.
Mr. Tilang, could...
Yes, ma'am.
Could you explain for those listening what cross subsidy means?
Yes. So in our, in our Fridley Public Schools, we have special education program. And the state of Minnesota is required to fund special education 100%. They're not doing that based on current legislation. So what we do is, in a district, is we allocate $2 million from our general fund, which is that state funding, state funding right there, the green bar, out of our general fund and allocate it over to our special education, special education programs, because the state is not funding them 100%.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So the other question that comes up during our presentation is open enrollment. And we put together this presentation to help our community better understand that, understanding that many of them don't have students in our school district, and maybe by the time their kids were in school, it looked a little different. So students in Minnesota have a choice to open enroll in a public-funded school, and they can open enroll in approved charter schools, other school districts, or even approved online programs that MDE has approved. So when the state created this, this statute or regulation, if you will, they allowed the students' funding to follow them. So we do know that we have three important funding streams. We get students that attend public schools, get state funding, some portions of federal dollars, and of course, their local tax dollars. So their state and federal funding will follow them, whatever they go to the, to the approved school districts that they, they enroll in. And previously, the way that was funded, it was based on students, resident students served. So if Fridley had 3,000 students, that's what the funding we would get for, whether they were open enrolled or not. They changed the, the formula a little bit to allow for, for total number of students served. So what that means for our community is that when a student enrolls in one school district, the voter-approved, the, the way the MDE and by that, the Minnesota Department of Education calculates the funding stream, they allocated voter-approved funding for that student also follows them where they go. So Todd just spoke very briefly about Hopkins Public Schools that's able to generate $2,300 for their voter-approved levy. If that student open enrolls in Fridley, we don't get $2,300 for that student. We only get $911, because that's the amount of money that our Fridley community has approved for its resident students. So in a way, it's fair, because it allows all students to be equal. And whatever the community feels is necessary to support their schools and their students, that's what all students get. If our student who is in Fridley open enrolls in Hopkins, that student is funded that $2,300. Because for school choice to successfully happen, then the funding has to follow those students. Because if they were receiving less money, most districts will not be happy to participate in that, because they will be supporting and educating students at a loss. So that's what that slide there briefly talks about. Next, here is the same chart that you looked at. The school districts are now highlighted. Sometimes people do ask, you do have open enrollment, where are those students coming from? And many of them really are surprised to find out that we are only four square miles within the city of Fridley, and we are surrounded by these other school districts, which are much larger than Fridley, but have portions of our school, of our city within them. So when you look at Columbia High School Districts, for example, some of those portions are not too far away from our high school. They're less than two miles, and parents do transport their children if they are open enrolled from those communities. So while the families that live within those Columbia Heights, Spring Lake Park, and Anoka Hennepin school boundaries, their mailing addresses do say Fridley, so they are Fridley residents. The school boundaries have kinda boxed them out, and they are being served by other school districts other than Fridley Public Schools. Their families and their parents pay taxes that support the city of Fridley. Their levy dollars, however, are allocated to us, the other school districts that are within their home boundaries. So many of our students in Spring Lake Park, Anoka Hennepin, and Columbia Heights are Fridley residents. In addition to that, Fridley Public Schools is a member of Northwest Suburban Integration School District. And, you know, we, it's a consortium of seven public schools. And within these schools, we change students all the time. That's why our enrollment typically is very fluid, because all of these school districts, the participating schools within those have some type of magnet program that do attract parents. So when you think of having a choice to enroll your child anywhere, there could be an opportunity that best suits the need of your child in a neighboring school district, and the law allows you to enroll your child there, and the funding for, for your child follows, follows him or her to the school district. For us at Fridley Public Schools, we have the IB Continuum from preschool all the way to 12th grade. And many of our students who are coming to us through open enrollment typically say they value the small feel and tight-knit community of Fridley, and they are also enrolling to participate and take advantage of the full DPD program when they, when they get to, to high school. So this is where our students are coming from. When you look at those seven school districts, majority of our students are coming to us from Anoka Hennepin. That's where we have our largest draw. So we are happy to present this to our community today, just to help answer some of those questions. This information is also on our website. We have included frequently asked questions there as well. We have a ton of information for community members who even just want to know what tax impact will have should this referendum pass. Again, the school district will have one question on the ballot on November 5. We are asking the community to revoke and replace an existing levy that supports student learning. And we got a really good example of that today by the two groups of students who presented to us. So we are encouraging all our community members to go out and vote on November 5. And we have another community forum that is scheduled on October 23rd from 6:00 to 7:00 o'clock, and that's going to be held at the Fridley High School Auditorium. We have an advertisement in the local paper, so many of our community members will be able to see that, and that information is also on our website.
Ms. McLemore, could you address transportation for open enrollment students, please?
Yes. So we looked at some of the, if I can go back to this particular map. So the students who are enrolling at Fridley Public Schools from Columbia Heights, Spring Lake Park, and Anoka, and Spring Lake Park, transport themselves. Because we are a member of Northwest Suburban Integration School District, transportation for the students who participate in school choice and in open enrolls with us is funded through Minnesota Department of Education's integration program, so we are not paying for that.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we move on to business action items. Every month, we're fortunate to have a public that supports the Fridley Public Schools, and we have a resolution for accepting gifts. In the past month, for donating to Fridley Middle School are Ruth and Paul Balhan, $18,000 for science supplies and math intervention. Also, Mayo Cuisine provided dinners for teachers during the conferences. Do I have a motion to accept the gifts and thank the donors for their contributions?
Motion to accept.
I have a motion by Pruetos, seconded by Thornton, to accept the gifts and thank the donors for their generous contributions. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Adam?
Aye.
Ms. Delville?
Aye.
Ms. Perito?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Ms. Stark?
Aye.
Ms. Thornton?
Aye.
And the resolution passes. Thank you. Next up, we have a resolution with regard to supporting an application to the Minnesota State High School League. Dr. Heil.
All right. Thank you, Chair Riddle. This is an annual grant resolution from the Minnesota State High School League for grants and funding from the MSHS, HSL Foundation. So we are asking the board to approve this resolution this evening.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution to support Form A application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Delville, seconded by Adam, to approve the resolution of the school board's support Form A application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation. Any further discussion? If not, clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Adam?
Aye.
Ms. Delville?
Aye.
Ms. Perito?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Ms. Stark?
Aye.
Ms. Thornton?
Aye.
And the resolution passes. Thank you. Now, we have a second reading of several policies. Ms. Seifert-Hurtling, you have the first. Actually, you have two of them, don't you?
I have two of them. Good evening, Board Chair Riddle, board members, Superintendent Heil. Tonight I have the second reading of two school board policies. One is school board policy 419, Tobacco-Free Environments. Last month, we talked about adding electronic delivery services, devices to this policy. And then we also talked about adding a line not to solicit or accept any contributions from organizations that support tobacco. So those are the two changes that we talked about last week.
The second policy that I bring for you this evening is Policy 532, Use of Peace Officers and Crisis Teams to Remove Students with IEPs from School Grounds. We talked about deleting the sentence that says severe property damage. We also talked about that eliminating the use of the word seclusion rooms. So those are the two policies I bring forth to you this evening for second reading.
Thank you. Mr. Tilang, you also have two policies for second reading tonight.
Good evening, Board Chair Riddle, board members, and Superintendent Dr. Heil. Presenting two policies. Our first one, second reading, is Policy 713. It's our Student Activity Accounting. There have been no changes to this policy from the first reading, so we're presenting that tonight for approval. And then our second one that we're presenting is Policy 721. It's our Uniform Federal Grant Guidance. This is a new policy, and again, there's been no changes to, to the policy from the first reading, so we're presenting both of those policies tonight.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept the second reading and adoption of Policies 419, 450, excuse me, 532, 713, and 721?
Motion to approve those four.
Second.
I have a motion by Pruetos, seconded by Stark, to accept the second reading and adoption of the policies. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Thank you. Next up on our agenda item is the Consent Agenda. That includes the minutes of the school board business meeting and work session that were held on September 17th, 2019, our monthly financial reports, new contracts, amendments, leave of absences, terminations, resignations, and retirements, as well as the school onboarding, school board onboarding manual, and a approval request for the Fridley Middle School band trip to Chicago taking place May 7th through 9th of 2020. With that, I would like to just announce and thank Barb Rohan, who is retiring as a paraprofessional from the high school after 20 years of service to the Fridley Public School. So we certainly thank her for all of her work through the district and for her helping out our children. With that, do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
I move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
It's over there. It was Carol. Okay. We have a motion by Delville, seconded by Thornton, to approve the Consent Agenda as previously mentioned. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Next up, we move on to written information, beginning with student enrollment. Dr. Heil.
Thank you. Wanted to share today, total enrollment we are showing as of October 1st for kindergarten through 12th grade is 2,683 students. When we include ECSE, PSCE, Transition, and HLC, it rounds up to 2,821 students. And with our four-year-old strong preschool program, we have a reflection of 2,961 students as of October 1st.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we have a first reading of several policies.
Good evening, Board Chair Riddle, board members, and Superintendent Heil. Four policies for your review this, this evening for first reading. Policy 601, School District Curriculum and Instructional Goals in Section 4. There's an addition in that section relating to district's responsibility to provide intervention services for, for students that are not meeting grade level or proficiency by grade three. And Policy 604, Instructional Curriculum in Section 2. The addition speaks to parent notification as to performance on MCA assessments. And then Section 2 highlights a protocol for modifications to IEP as related to transition plans. And Policy 696, Acceptance and Use of Grand Funding, there's just two minor changes related to, with Ed Services changed to Director of Teaching and Learning, and then there's one for the Finance Director as well. And then Policy 697, Major overhaul, adding the word instruction.
All right, thank you. And as always, these are be available on our website, so if anyone has interest in reading them, certainly feel free to go to the website and look for those. I believe they're under the school board area.
School board policies, yep.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up, we have reports from school board members, beginning with the Northwest Suburban Integration School District Joint Powers Board Meeting that was held on September 18th. I attended that meeting. Main things that came out of the meeting, it was kinda that first introductory, first one of the year, so we kind of get in line to what the programmings are gearing up to do for, for the year. The big things that are coming down the pike for Northwest Suburban is their, the Anoka Hennepin School District is looking to add another STEM program to Anoka High School. This is in response to the fact that their Blaine High School program is getting to capacity. So they're kinda phasing the Blaine one out for the rest of the consortium to be able to send students to, and then bringing in Anoka Hennepin, or the Anoka High School, excuse me, as that. So they're beginning the, starting that, the procedure to get that program approved for their STEAM program as a magnet school, so they can be part of the transportation dollars, as well as the magnet, or the lottery program for those magnet schools. Also, the other major change that we're looking at is to our joint powers agreement. Last year, the St. Francis School District petitioned to join the consortium. And looking over the joint powers agreement, it didn't include the fact that we're very heavily into the magnet school programs. And in Northwest Suburban, we feel that is, is how we move students most effectively across those district boundaries to handle the integration problem that we are basically there to combat. With St. Francis not having a magnet school program, we felt that we really needed to reflect that a little bit better in our joint powers agreement, so we're adding separate language in there to specifically call out the magnet school programs and requiring any district that wants to be part of the Northwest Suburban to either be looking toward and progressing to adding a magnet school program or already have a magnet school program in their school. So it's gonna be much more transparent for districts that come from outside that want to join the consortium of what we, what we expect of them and what they can expect from us, so. Next would be the Schools for Equity in Education meeting that was held September 20th. Ms. Thornton?
Thank you, Mr. Riddle. On September 20th, we had a couple of speakers there. The first was Jerry Von Korf. He's the attorney behind the lawsuit filed in Stearns County that claims that states are underfunding of special education results in school districts inability to adequately serve all student groups. He believes that if you build a large base of support from school districts in extreme financial distress, it would be a great, helpful, and make a successful case against the state. So that was our first speaker, and we also had the brother of Bill Morris, Peter Letterman, who follows the political trends and perceptions toward K through 12 education here in Minnesota. It was based on 1,200 samples statewide the end of August of this year. And some of the trends were 40, 46% of Minnesota feel that it's moving in the right, right direction, compared to 53% felt that way last year. 32% feel that they're better off with their finances this year compared to only 37% in 2018. So 5% feel that they're worse off now. But 32% feel education is most important. That's still an important state issue here, and healthcare is second at 23%, which was the same as last year. Surprisingly, 56% feel all children can learn regardless of their race, ethnicity, or family outcome, so. And third, C is gonna have business partner program where they're gonna have three tiers, levels that communities, they can, their mission that all public school children must have equal access, and you can have time, you can access to C's 57 school district members and have time to meet with superintendent... district members and have time to meet with superintendents or school board members and present what your mission of your company is. You'll have a presence in the communications in their on, online website, and also opportunities, like I said, to connect with possibly up to 70 members. So that's something that they're working on to, to try to offset some of the membership dues for C. So those are some of the highlights.
All right. Thank you. Our final report this evening will be on the Northeast Metro 916 Board Meeting that was held October 2nd. Ms. Delvo.
Thank you, Chair Riddle. 916 is the district, it's a member district, intermediate member district, and that's where we access a lot of our higher-level special needs programming. In District 916, like here in Fridley, they use a multi-tiered system of support, MTSS, and they have seen great gains in literacy as a result of implementing that across their district now. And, and they're going to be moving that more towards the math area now. They've seen a decrease of 800 fewer behavioral incidents since they've been working with the MTSS program, as well as a decrease in restrictive procedures. So they're seeing really good progress there. There are a number of non-members districts that have students in the 916 district that have been grandfathered in, and those numbers are down from 50 students enrolled to 39. So that's opening up more spots for member districts as they've had waiting lists over the past several years. And so that's good news for if Fridley needs to utilize those spots, that there are more opening up now. They approved their contract with Canvas Mental Health, who provides, through one of their mental health grants, provides some additional mental health support services within the schools, and submitted a resolution to the Minnesota School Board Association, which will be voted on at their annual delegate assembly in December to increase safe schools levies for collaboratives as well as all districts. And so they'll be recommending that go into the legislative platform. MSBA will vote on that in December. And that is all I have.
Thank you very much. Next up would be important future school board dates. The next AMSD Board Meeting will be held November 1st to 7:00 a.m. at the Cora Education Center. The next Northeast Metro 916 Board Meeting, it'll be November 6th at 6:00 p.m. at the Bel Air School. Our next Fridley Public School Board Meeting will be held November 19th, work session at 5:30, open forum at 7:00, and the business meeting at 7:30 here at the Fridley Community Center. And also our Truth in Taxation in December 17th, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. here in the Fridley Community Center. And also, in reference to the students that we had earlier here tonight, I certainly encourage folks to go out and see Guys and Dolls. That'll be taking place November 8th, 9th, 14th, 15th, and 16th at the district auditorium. Any additional things for the good of the group this evening? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Adam, seconded by Thornton, to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we are adjourned at 8:24. Thank you.